Good evening, everybody. Please can I welcome you all to this meeting of the Scrutiny Committee. The time is 6:30pm on Wednesday, the 13th of July, 2022. For those listening and watching, my name is councillor Brook and I'm chair of the committee. I have a few housekeeping points to make before we begin. Please can I advise that the open parts of the meeting are being audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting is being made and will be publicly available shortly afterwards. For those in the room, please can I ask you to speak clearly and keep the microphone quite close to you when speaking? For any members or officers online, please can I ask that you mute your microphone and turn your camera off? And please can everyone ensure that their mobile phones and electronic devices are either switched off or turned to silent? For those of us in the room, in the unlikely event that it is necessary to evacuate the building, the fire alarm will sound. Please follow any instructions given to you by staff or fire marshals. All fire exits are clearly marked by the green exit signs and please proceed quickly and calmly to the assembly point in Abbey Gardens. Please do not use the lift. We have several members of the public this evening, so I'd just like to say welcome and thank you for joining us. The majority of the speakers in the room would like to speak on the Station Approach agenda item, so when we get to public participation on the agenda in a few minutes, I'll ask each of you in turn to come forward to the empty desk marked 'public speaking', and the microphone is activated by pressing the large button on the base. And as you know, you'll have three minutes to make your contribution and a timer will appear to show the amount of time you have remaining. Can I also welcome the members of TACT that we have in the room this evening? Regarding the HR Outturn Report, I understand that you'd like to wait until we get to the HR Outturn Report to make your... Speak... To speak with us, brilliant, okay. If it's quite a long piece going through the Station Approach, then by all means go and grab a drink and come back. So we may be some time. So if you do decide at any point you'd like to make your points earlier, then please make me aware and we will come to you. So turning to the agenda this evening, do we have any apologies, Matthew?
Good evening, Chair members. We have one apology from... Sorry, Chair. We have one apology from councillor Cutler, who's been replaced by councillor Rutter for this evening. All other members present.
Thank you. Welcome councillor Rutter. Any declaration of interests this evening? No? Thank you. So we come on to item three, Chairperson's announcements. So we spoke at the last meeting about the likelihood of needing to programme additional meetings to take on some of the larger items on the agenda. So particularly the major projects. I just wanted to give you some advance warning that we're currently looking at scheduling an additional meeting mid to late January 2023 in order that we can scrutinise the next stage of the Station Approach project. So I just wanted to give you an advance warning of that, that that will be coming out as and when the date's been confirmed. I have nothing else at this time. So coming on to item four, minutes of the meeting on 14th of June 2022. Can I ask that those that were here present, if they confirm that we can make... That that's a true and accurate record of what happened on the evening? And any amendments? Agreed? Thank you. Okay, public participation. So I just want to confirm we have them all in the room. We have Imogen Dawson, Gavin Hunter, thank you, Chris Higgins... I'm going to say Fingal, but I don't know the surname. Maguera? Thank you. And Nicholas John. Wonderful. So I'll call you in that order if that's okay to speak. So as I said, I'll ask each of you in turn to come forward to the empty desk in front of you. Once we've heard all of the points from the members of the public, I'll ask councillor Todd and the officer team to respond to your points within their introduction if possible. And finally, as well as the members of the public speaking tonight, we have Mr White, who's a resident of Sussex Street, who'd contacted us regarding parking provision for local residents. So at the end of the public participation, Emma, I will come to you because I know that you've spoken to him. Okay, so Imogen Dawson, welcome. Thank you.
I welcome the update putting emphasis on social and environmental factors as well as economic ones, and the need for much more inclusive and wide-ranging consultation with people at the very early stages in planning. Note that people live, work and shop in the area close to the railway station, while others live on Worthy Lane in the Hyde Conservation Area, which flanks the cattle market Worthy Lane car park. Thus, the Station Approach project shouldn't be labelled or considered as just a transport hub. The update refers to a situation post-pandemic with a new normal of work-life patterns and travel on which research and evaluation data would form the foundations for the development of proposals. Unfortunately, the situation now is far from normal. We've entered a period likely to be long-lasting of huge instability here and across the world, which is already affecting our patterns of life. Covid, the cost of living crisis, spiralling inflation, increase in interest rates, rise of fuel costs and levels of debt curtailing spending and growth, plus the increasing effects of climate change, floods, heatwaves etc., and of course, the war in Ukraine. Given all these factors, I would urge the council to hit the pause button now. Data collected already this year about market value and best value analysis of the sites and that for transport and parking started in May and due to run until October this year will not be fit for purpose. Another factor key to the success of the project and due to start a week from now is consultation with near neighbours, amongst others, to last until the 30th of September. The timing could not be worse. Most of the period is over the school holidays where work-life patterns change, with fewer workers residents around and more visitors than usual. Instead, attention could be given to the methods of consultation needed for the future. Letters to near neighbours for this meeting and the cabinet meeting arrived to one address only of the dozen or so houses on Worthy Lane at very short notice. Council, thank you Matthew, did send a revised letter to all of us, but it was too late for most of us to attend. Now to things that are not to do with me but are what they told me. All right. Some of them asked me to please for more user-friendly online consultations, having struggled with the one for the movement strategy and River Park. The latest feedback concerns the greener travel consultation, which indicates that anyone who doesn't have the latest Apple app or the latest version of Windows cannot load or make the interactive map survey work. Other feedback from neighbours includes get the PNR, the Park and Ride proposed to the north of Winchester up and running before making decisions about the car parks in the project area. Liaise with Hampshire County Council to sort out the continuing problems, particularly around the Carfax junction for through traffic and also routing around the city centre. Together with HCC, put together an integrated transport plan for discussion with all interested parties from bus companies to railways, without which the net zero target cannot be achieved. Planning a major project has to include an analysis of the harms versus the benefits of building on land, which could be used as a green lung for the city and an area for people to relax or exercise outside. Given the need for well-insulated homes for the future and the objective by the council to do so, if anything should be built in this area, it should be houses and flats, not shops and offices. And this is a direct quote, "How on earth is Winchester City Council going to manage Silver Hill, the possible building on the site of the old recreation centre and Station Approach? Is all this going to be phased or shall the city become one huge building site?"
Thank you, Imogen. Appreciate your time. Thank you for coming to speak to us today. Gavin Hunter, please.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the invite and the opportunity to speak this evening. So I'm here on behalf of the University of Winchester. And all I would say at this point is that the new vision for the development of a mixed-use site supporting green growth provides a really good gateway to the city alongside improvements to the urban realm. This is really key. As a university, who are the largest provider of higher education in the city, having been established for over 180 years, we are actually very supportive of the approach to the scheme as things stand. We've previously expressed our interest in some form of involvement and have been involved in the earlier stages of consultation, because the proximity to our campus is key, as is this route from the station to those campus locations. The current review of the scheme is welcome and is an opportunity for the university to reaffirm its engagement with the city and any proposals for that location, which is close to our campus. We think that the site represents an exciting opportunity for the city and the universities wishes to be fully engaged regarding the new vision for the site as it develops. I don't have any questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin. Much appreciated. Thank you for coming along this evening. Chris Higgins, please.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Before I retired, I was the director of estates, both for the University of Winchester and for the London School of Economics. And I have a great deal of experience of putting up successful, high-quality, major design schemes. And I'm a supporter of the development of Station Approach in principle. What I'm concerned about is the track record that the city has, which is, I mean, it's just so disappointing that it hasn't worked before. But you do have, on your doorstep, you do have a very specialised firm that has immense knowledge on this particular site. They worked for six months during the last aborted competition and have analysed the site, they know it backwards, and they spent something like three, four, five months arguing with your previous senior officers running the previous scheme that the brief was completely wrong. I think what you're now planning to do, it sounds very sensible and I welcome it, I think it's constructive. But it's really important we learn from the mistakes of the past. Design Engine architects were the firm who worked on that previous scheme. They have this immense knowledge and I don't know how well you know that practice, but they have an outstanding reputation, in fact, an international reputation. They have built a British embassy in the Yemen for the Foreign Office. They've won a competition to build the Shakespearean Globe Theatre in Gdansk in Poland. And they have a stunning track record of other really good award-winning buildings. But they were really badly treated by your senior officers who've now left the council in the previous scheme. I just plead with the council to learn from the mistakes. A lot of the knowledge to make this scheme work successfully is here in the middle of Winchester, where we have an outstanding firm. I, by the way, have no interest in them at all, apart from the fact that I have commissioned them and worked with them in the past in the university sector. But I think you would... I just think it's a fantastic opportunity to wipe the slate clean, get them to present both to the members and the staff, hopefully to talk to cabinet, and show them what they know before you set in stone the way you want to go ahead with the scheme. So I wish you luck, but it's a constructive suggestion, which I hope you might be able to act on. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come and speak with us today. Fingal Maguera, please.
Right. Hello. Good afternoon. Sorry, not quite used to the public speaking. Just to say, I'm a resident and I've been a resident of the area for nine years and I welcome the opportunity to come here today. I think as echoed by some of the previous speakers, the access... Well, I found the access to the information is a little bit difficult to get hold of within the website or not clearly postmarked for those of us that don't have a lot of time to research into it. And the invite time and the response time to attend here was really tight and there's also very limited time for the initial responses prior to your meeting next week. Nevertheless, it's an area which is going to have competing uses and it would be interesting to see how the square can... Or the circle can be squared in the sense that you've got competing uses and currently a lot of the area is just a walk-through area rather than a destination on its own. And as a resident, I would look forward to having a better balance than what there is now. Consider also the sustainability, better transport links, but also an area which is, which is a little bit more well-rounded than it is now and not an area where people just have to walk through quickly to get to the next destination. Yeah, and I'll keep it brief and just leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking the time to come and speak to us this evening. Nicholas John, please.
Hi. Thanks for coming tonight and speak. I'll keep mine brief as well. As a local resident, number of years in Gladstone Street opposite the site, I've seen many failed schemes from well-known architects in London. And also champion design engineer, it's a good practice. But I think as a local resident, I've seen so many missed opportunities of what could have been achieved in terms of scale, context, pedestrian access. I mean, some of the ideas put forward by the previous practice were just... Just didn't make sense in terms of the scale and straight away, it just didn't seem to work in any way. I think moving forward, we're just walking around the site today. Context is the one driving word that comes to mind. You've got to think about four sides of this site. You've got a prominent, huge, modernist building, the Record Office. You've got a famous station coming out. You've got to think about scale, scale context and people who are going to enjoy this site. If you don't have those, it's not going to work. It can't be development-driven, it can't be money-driven. And if we're going to learn anything from the mistakes of the past, you've got to either have a collective voice of local residents from day one, local architects, not just Design Engine but other architects. I am an architect by keeper of low profile. But I have also worked with very big architect practices in the 90s and I don't like shouting about what I've been involved in, but I know good from bad and the previous scheme was dreadful. But moving forward, we've got to learn from the past, past mistakes. Too many personalities. We've got to meet on site, walk around it, get a feel of the context of the site and the residential, commercial and all those elements. And if we can do that, then I think we've got a chance because there is a great opportunity here.
Thank you. Can I ask you to switch off the microphone, please? Thank you. Thank you to all the speakers in the room for taking the time to ask questions and share your thoughts of this today. Emma, coming to you regarding Mr White's question. I understand you've spoken to him, please.
Thank you. Yes, unfortunately, Mr White couldn't attend this evening, but I have had an email exchange with him. He lives on Sussex Street and his main concern is residence parking if there is a development that comes forward on the site. He welcomes a development that improves the area but wants residents to be engaged throughout the process, which is our intention. And he has also informed me that he was part of a number of residents that spoke with Hampshire County Council recently about improvements to the area in terms of walking and cycling and movement in the area. And we are in contact with Hampshire County Council and we'll be getting a copy of that report to feed into our consultations. So I wanted to note Mr White's concerns and to reassure him that we... Our intention is to have residents engaged throughout the process and I look forward to meeting him in the near future.
Thank you for that. And please pass on our thanks to Mr White for wishing to make representation this evening. So, thank you regarding public participation. We will now come on to the Station Approach agenda item, which you've just made your deputations on. So it's recommended that the committee scrutinise and comment on the proposals within the Cabinet report reference, CAB3349, which is to be considered by Cabinet at its meeting on the 19th of July 2022. We have in the room to support us with this councillor Todd, Mr John East and Ms Emma Taylor. So thank you for joining us this evening. Councillor Todd, are you going to introduce the paper for us?
I will if I may. And I'd like to start, well firstly, thank you for putting this paper on the agenda so that we have a chance to talk about it. I need to declare not an interest, because I'm not a voting member of the committee, but for awareness, I am the county councillor for this area. So I'm very aware of some of the discussions going on with Hampshire and indeed quite positioned to facilitate them. I'm also the ward councillor, one of the three board councillors for this area as well. So we as an administration are strongly believe that there is a great opportunity from restarting the Station Approach project, because there are real opportunities to improve things in that area. But as a couple of the speakers and the deputations have mentioned, we can't carry on as we did before. The context has changed. Covid has dramatically changed work and travel patterns. The movement strategy has given us new insight on how people move around the city, including the station area, and what our vision for that movement should be. And this time, we're talking to Network Rail and other partners to see if it's possible to take a wider view and create a more coherent scheme for the area that uses both railway and city land. And it is a great opportunity, because if we get this right, it will strengthen green travel, connect the station, the city and the wider area better. It can support future ways of working and living in our city and it can do so in a way that respects the city and all the things that are special about it. But as some of the deputations have commented, there are things that we need to think about in the process and we're deliberately... We are deliberately getting consultation and engagement right from the very beginning, creating the outline of how the project is going to work now, getting input on how we're planning to run a consultation, hearing people's ideas right from the beginning. And I do apologise to the people in Worthy Lane who were not informed as early as other people. We... I was sent two documents. One was a map showing the line within which people were going to be informed. And the second was a spreadsheet of all the addresses. And I checked the map and not the spreadsheet. And unfortunately, some of the houses in Worthy Lane were set back a bit further than the line allowed for, which was why they didn't get captured in the address list. So I do apologise for that. But I would like to also thank officers for moving so quickly to sort that out once it became clear that we had a problem. And although most of the space that we're talking about is car parks, there is a lot of context that we need to be aware of. As Mr Maguera said, these are areas that people move through. So I agree completely with Mr John's point of view about context and scale and the need to get that right and the fact that we have residential streets and active streets looking on to that area. But I also agree with Mr Maguera that it's a place that people move through and movement is incredibly important and getting that movement right will be incredibly important. And we have new thinking and new ideas that we need to reflect about, for example, wider questions of movement, as to how buses move between cities and to our city and through the city and how that relates to the stations and are we able to better connect, for example, buses and rail? I agree also that with the point that Mr Higgins made about the need to learn from what happened before, I have actually already... We have already scheduled a meeting with Design Engine, because we are... They are absolutely committed to our city. They have done outstanding work on a whole series of buildings in our city and they really understand the area and they understand the price of getting the brief wrong, because I know enough about having worked in the creative world, which is, you know, if we write the same brief, we have worked with top-quality architects. There is not some magic solution waiting to be found that they were unable to find. And so actually getting that brief right and using this early consultation period to understand the needs of the area and what we need to be doing will be absolutely essential and learning from what had happened before. And I agree also that one of the things that has changed that Mr Hunter talked about is that our universities... I mean, actually, the University of Winchester has been architecturally ambitious for as long as we can remember. But both our universities are ambitious and they're an important part of the future of our city. And we have made sure that at every stage, even on the work asked for so far, that, you know, educational uses are being considered in there. And this is a phase where we will be going out and talking to key stakeholders. And so if the University of Winchester wants a proper sit-down meeting so we can go beyond you filling out a form on the website and have a proper discussion about your needs and at what point that might become relevant within the future project, we are of course happy to do so. And finally, Mrs Dawson's point made also really important things about the need to be joined up with the movement strategy. The need which we're intensely aware of, that any thinking about potential reuse of the Worthy Lane car park and the cattle market car park has to be linked to what's happening with Park and Ride North and has to be linked to an understanding of how parking works in the entire area. And we can't just sort of unilaterally say, here is a project, we want to build a building, but if it messes up movement for the rest of the city as a result of doing so, that would be the wrong thing to do. So we are very aware of that. And I also appreciate her comments on the consultation technologies we'll be using. We're not just using technology. You know, we will also be using human beings. But I think your point to say that we need to test that everything is accessible and usable and that nobody feels shut out by the process will be incredibly important. So greatly appreciated and very helpful comments from all the deputations, all of which we will take very seriously. We will be working closely with Hampshire to understand some of the other work going on, for example, with Sussex Street and Upper High Street and movement in that area. And what we're presenting you today is very much a listening process, a first stage that helps us, tells us whether we have a project that is a goer or not, but also gives us a brief so that we know we're starting on sound footings with full reflection of the input that we've received. We're absolutely clear, this project will only succeed if we work closely with local people, businesses, wider society, other stakeholders, and make it succeed. We believe it's a really exciting opportunity. We're looking forward to hearing scrutiny's views to help us strengthen the plan further. And we're very grateful for the deputations we've heard already.
Thank you very much. Mr East or Mr Taylor, would either of you like to add anything to that?
Thank you, Chair. I think councillor Todd's introduction has been quite comprehensive and what we'd like to do is obviously listen to what members have to say and then respond accordingly.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go to the room. Do we have any questions on items one to 10 of pages 13 to 20 of the main reports, please? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Chair. The first question I would like to ask, and it's on page 14, which is the recommendations. And we've heard this evening from Imogen with reference to the technology. I am concerned, if I may say, about the dates, as she was too. So what... Is there an opportunity for that initial consultation and public engagement? I appreciate it runs from sort of July, but it's supposed to finish in September and as she rightly said, it is holiday season. So can that date be extended at all? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. What we decided to do was we're well aware of the fact that it is school holidays and a lot of people will be away. So we didn't want to launch the consultation in a four-week period, which is common practice. So that is the reason that we've extended the consultation to the end of September. So the intention is subject to cabinet approval. It will be launched at the end of July and we'll get the message out to everyone that it's now gone live. But it will be till the end of September that will give the opportunity for people coming back from the school holidays to engage throughout September. The public engagement events that we're going to hold, the pop-up events, will be held middle of September to ensure that the schools are back. So by having this longer period, we hope that it will reach out to a wider and give enough opportunity for everyone that wants to participate to do so.
Councillor Cook.
If I may follow on, Chair, from that point that's just been made. If I may follow on, Chair, from that point that's just been made. Regarding, I think councillor Todd referred to human beings, so referring now to drop in sessions. And you're now referring to pop ups. Where will these pop up locations be? Will they be weekends? Will they be a whole day, not just nine in the morning till five? Because there are many people that work from home. They can't leave their home to come out to those meetings. They'll want to come to an evening. So is that going to be available for all? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Yes, indeed, we want to ensure that working people are able to come along to an in person session if they want to. The intention at the moment is to run two sessions. One on a Thursday up at the station. And that would be an afternoon into the evening. We've spoken with the railway companies that have suggested that Thursday is a good day in terms of the numbers of people that come through the station. So we're anticipating the Thursday for that. And then on the Saturday, the intention is that we'll have a pop up in the High Street so that we'll have a wider access to people that are coming into Winchester to give their views on what they think about the Station Approach area.
Thank you. Councillor Horall.
Chair, thank you. I have several questions through to page 20. Do you want me to batch them up? Would that be helpful? And I appreciate one or two of them you may not have an immediate answer to. You may want to take those away. And clearly, a number of decisions have already been made before we saw the paper for this evening and heard about the revitalisation of the project. So I'm just trying to seek some clarification on some of those points. On page 13, it talks about the previous project's assumptions around movement and sustainable transport are out of date. And it would be good to understand at this point what it is that everyone thinks is out of date. There's clearly a data point that would be helpful for us to understand. I'm very sympathetic to the first public speaker who raised the issue of the Northern Park and Ride. It's such a fundamental requirement of the movement strategy, which I think we're all in agreement with. But its impact on this particular area. And so the question is, what is our timeframe for the Northern Park and Ride? And its location and development in the context of the car parking that is identified on this site? I think it was raised earlier, a question on page 14. We have a number of projects underway. Central Winchester regeneration, which I'm hugely enthusiastic about, as you know. But we have a new doctor surgery that's still not coming out of the ground. We still haven't demolished Friars Gate, even though we've agreed that we should. And we have other projects at River Park and the depot. So my question really is, with the pressure on resources that we have, do we have the capacity for all of these regeneration projects in the city? And what does that do to the timeline for the delivery of all of the others? And as I say, some of these may be for future feedback. Specifically on page 15, you talk about affordable homes. I know in central Winchester, we said if we had them, we wanted 40%. It doesn't mention a percentage here, but is that our aspiration? As a council, that's always been our desire. And are we pursuing that? That would be good to clarify, I think. Although other tenures I know are potentially being looked at based on the comment here. A further question about the bus station. I know the bus station in the movement strategy originally was talked about at the railway station. That was reviewed. You refer in the paper to a transport hub for this area. Although I know some of the members who spoke this evening, residents who spoke this evening, felt that that wasn't necessarily appropriate articulation. But are we reconsidering that, given the issues of bus station location as it pertains to central Winchester? I'm intrigued by the comment on page 16 at the very bottom, which talks about walls between functions at the council, particularly as council planning authority and council developer. Is there a presumption in the comment that's been made that the walls were not there before? And it says that we are going to have additional legal and procurement advice as a consequence. But I don't see that identified in 2.2 on page 16. So I just wanted to understand, and I know we've talked about this before, council regulator, councillor, council developer. And as I say, the comment at the bottom of page 16 makes it sound as if we failed somehow previously. So it would be good to understand our intent there. And then finally, Chair, the reference group which is being suggested, and we have one obviously for CWR. But NDAs were a point of contention for that. Just to try and understand from officers, what is your intent for attendance at reference groups? And the constraints on members of that group? Thank you, Chair. And on the long list up until page 20, I know. But thank you for the opportunity to ask.
Thank you, Councillor Horall. So there's several questions in there. I'm assuming there's probably some for each of you. So who would like to start the answers first?
Obviously, the big thing on movement and sustainable transport is that the City of Winchester Movement Strategy, part of which was actually funded by the previous Station Approach project, takes, shall we say, a harder line on the need for how we will manage car parking in the centre versus previous revisions, both of this project and other projects as well. I mean, let's not forget that the City of Winchester Movement Strategy started after, for example, the Central Winchester SPD was agreed. And has wholly different assumptions in terms of parking versus the SPD. So it is in particular the expectations, the need to reduce private non residential car parking, the need to reduce public car parking as well. And the need to take a joined up view, which we were not able to do before, between station provision of car parking and the city council's provision of car parking. That is probably the biggest change in assumption as far as movement is concerned. But as was touched on earlier, there is also a great deal of work looking at how cars move in that particular area. There is a project underway with the county looking at circulation on Upper High Street, Sussex Street, Gladstone Street, which may present opportunities in terms of how any construction project or any project is worked on in the future as well. The Northern Park and Ride, as you know, is a matter of some uncertainty. There are two phases. There's one phase which is relatively certain in the grand scheme of things, which is the small Park and Ride at Kings Barton, the 200 place one, equivalent in size probably to Pitt or somewhere like that. And that is within the schedule of the Park and Ride, within the schedule of the Kings Barton build out. In theory, is due within two or three years. The question of the larger Park and Ride provision to the north, which is within the movement strategy, is obviously a longer term discussion. And is part of the movement strategy is firmly in the hands of discussions between, firstly, the discussion about Sir John Moore Barracks. And secondly, other options being always kept in scope by the county council. That is a longer term provision. And that does have impact in terms of particularly the Worthy Lane and Cattle Market opportunities for development. It has very little impact on Gladstone Street in terms of options. We don't think that a Northern Park and Ride would play any significant role in reducing movement to that car park. The question of capacity to handle, I think part of the challenge we face is that there are linkages of the kind that you talked about. So for example, if we are looking at a coherent bus system for Winchester, then we actually do need to be looking at Station Approach as well as Central Winchester. And this is also a project where there is a partner that wishes to be looking at this area as well. And that also has impact on, both on the resources available to address the issues in the area, but also on the timing question. In terms of affordable housing, and obviously it is early stages on this project. And it's possible that aspects of it may come forward in the next local plan. But certainly, this administration is committed, as all previous administrations have been, to the 40% goal within the local plan. And I would expect that to be reflected in our thinking on any development in this part of the city. And I think that's probably it in terms of questions I feel able to answer. My recollection about the NDA question, and as you know, I'm pretty allergic to NDAs and have no desire that they be put in unless it's absolutely unavoidable. My recollection was that it was linked into the procurement process before. But I can assure you that I will be the strongest possible advocate for finding ways to avoid using them, if it is at all possible, within the process.
Thank you, councillor Todd, and through you, Chair. Just to answer some of those questions which councillor Todd didn't refer to. I think the comments in section three, legal and procurement implications, are not any sort of, dare I say, reference to the past. But it's predominantly a reminder for us in terms of what we need to do in the future. And it's just setting out to members that we obviously do need to follow both procurement guidelines and also, and the council's procurement policies, which we have to date in terms of our procurement of consultants. And will continue to do so. But also reminds us that we need to make sure that how we act as a planning authority and how we act as, dare I say, the regenerator or regenerators, there need to be a clear division in terms of responsibilities. But I think I need to reassure you that there's absolutely no intention to, how can I sort of comment or cast any aspersions regarding how the previous projects may have been operated. So I don't think I really need to say any more than that. As councillor Todd has, I think, set out, you know, I don't envisage, certainly as an officer, won't be recommending that we introduce NDAs for any reference group. And at this point in time, whilst I'm certainly not the council's legal officer, I don't, in my responsibilities, I don't foresee at this point in time any need for an NDA. And it goes without saying that if we did feel that there was at some date in the future, that is something which we would obviously need to discuss and secure agreement, both, you know, at a political level. I think the other point, I mean, as councillor Todd rightly said, I mean, you know, our intention throughout this process is to ensure that we follow the local plan and what's in it. So that's our starting point. And of course, you know, I think we're all very clear in terms of what it says about affordable housing. But I think the final point, which possibly councillor Todd didn't cover, was that about capacity. Yes, you're right, there are a number of projects, major projects, regeneration projects, which the council is considering at the moment. We have Strategic Director here who may wish to say, not wishing to put on the spot, but may wish to interject if I'm saying anything wrong. But I mean, we have secured additional funds to provide the office support for regeneration projects. And what I would just say to the committee is just to remind ourselves that most of our projects, they're not sort of, you know, ones which we're going to be implementing next year or, you know, they are long term projects. And so one of the key things is that, A, actually being aware of how those projects interact with each other, which I think we are. B, those projects will be phased very much over a fairly lengthy period. And councillor Todd has referred, for example, to the impact absolutely critical of any, you know, things like Northern Park and Ride coming forward and having that in terms of our consideration and being fully aware of that. Though I think this is the start of a fairly, how can I, a very fully engaged process, but one which is not going to happen overnight. And in fact, one of the things we want to make sure is that we get it right this time. But absolutely critically aware of the phasing and its impact, you know, of different projects across the city and where we want to get to actually is taking the city, wonderful city forward. And so absolutely we need to be, you know, clear about that it's not one great big building site. But secondly, as the project grows, then we will obviously be seeking the funds, necessary funds, to ensure that we can take it forward appropriately.
Are you happy, councillor Horall, that that was all those questions?
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Crask.
Thank you, Chair. Page 16, about the funding. And as a comment, I think it's prudent to do work now. While Network Rail is looking at the area and while we've got the local plan in place. £155,000 for phase one. Where does phase one end? What are we going to get at the end of phase one? Does phase one end the strategic outline case?
Yes.
Phase one, I'm trying to match up, you know what, like with phases. Phase one, if I look on page 37, phase one ends when? Is it September or autumn 2022? I'm trying to understand when we're going to get this strategic outline case. So what are we going to spend £155,000 on? And where's the stop gap to say, you know what, we spent £155,000. Not a good idea, we should stop now before we spend any more.
If I can just help members with that. The intention is that phase one takes us to, as you said, right, to strategic outline business case. And our intention is to report to members early next year with the outcome of the work done in terms of both consultation and engagement, what we've heard from the public, the various studies which we've already started to undertake. And importantly, undertaking a capacity study. And our work, and you know, this is really critical, our work with Network Rail. And of course, one of the reasons why the project has been said is restarting is because there's a window of opportunity to work with Network Rail to achieve, how can I put it, a rather better whole than otherwise we would have been able to do so. And bearing in mind, those costs are not, you know, we're sharing some of those costs. So they are also putting in funding to take us to strategic outline business case. We will then come back to members early next year. And as councillor Brooks said earlier, I mean, we've committed to reporting to scrutiny beforehand, at which point the project will either be, how can I put it, one which members, we all collectively think is, you know, has got, you know, legs and, you know, is worth taking forward to the next level. At which point we will then be seeking members' agreement towards a budget to take it to the next stage.
Yeah, just to add to that, I mean, we are intending to have a disciplined gated project. And the point of having a gated process on project management is that sometimes you don't go through the gate. You know, we wouldn't be starting this work if we didn't think there was a plausible case that we will go through the gate. But, you know, it was actually touching on one of the points that was made earlier about uncertainty and other such things. Is if it turns out that it's not a goer at this particular time, then that will be a completely valid conclusion to draw at that point. Obviously, our intent, because we believe there's a huge opportunity here, is that we do go through the gate and that will be what we're working through towards.
Very good. So we spend £155,000, but there is a gate where we say, you know what, it's not worth going through the gate. Or can't go through the gate right now because we don't have enough resources and we don't have the funds, but we'll go through the gate and revisit in like five years' time. Cost might have gone up by then, we might need to change it a bit further. But there is that gate that will have a chance to stop information and the consultant.
Essentially, the intention is that in spring next year, we get to you and say, based on the work that we've done, the capacity study, the work with residents and other stakeholders. based on the work that we've done, the capacity study, the work with residents and other stakeholders, and the business analysis, we believe that there is a case to go forward. And we want to move to the next phase, which as outlined in appendix two will include the preparation of a master plan, move towards a full business case. That will be, we will tell you, based on what we've done to that point, what the more detail about what that phase will look like, what it's likely to cost and what we're aiming to achieve by the end of it.
Thank you, and my last question, Chair, is on page 19. But recognise and appreciate the key risk being lack of buy-in from stakeholders and the achievement of a public affairs consultancy to ensure public are actively sought stakeholder view. Has this public affairs consultancy got experience with similar such developments? And will they be able to hear comments on development?
If I could just answer that one, I mean, the, we went through a procurement process to select a public affairs consultancy when we interviewed, asked, invited to tender a number of consultancies and interviewed them. And their appointment was based on the fact that they demonstrated relevant experience, relevant similar experience and understanding of some of the issues which, how can I put it, we have in Winchester. And indeed, they have done other work, you know, within the district.
Could I make a suggestion if we're going to talk about phases in future reports? Perhaps the phasing titles can be added to appendix two, where you have the timeline so that we some context. Perhaps that, perhaps some lines, maybe a gate would be good. Thank you councillor Todd. Councillor Horle, you had another question?
Chair, yes, I did, and obviously Network Rail are coming up, councillor Crask mentioned them too. What is the deal with Network Rail that we have currently? It's clearly attractive from your point of view that they have come to the table, given the proximity to the land that we own. What have we agreed that we're doing with them in the short term, please?
So we have entered into a memorandum of understanding with Network Rail, which we will review towards the end of the year. At this point in time, the agreement is, as I was going to say, a loose, you know, agreement and sort of collaboration, nothing formal, to jointly explore the potential opportunities. And that takes us up to the strategic outline business case. We may get to a stage where actually, alongside the other work which I've described, we think at that stage it's appropriate to recommend to members a more formal collaboration. We may alternatively get to a stage whereby, despite our best efforts, we basically consider that the formal collaboration would not be in either party's interest and wouldn't be in the city council's interests. So again, that decisions around, you know, whether what we do at the next stage will not be made, I hasten to assure, by officers or behind closed doors, they will be made through, basically, securing approval from members.
Chair, we're putting £155,000 into the pot to get to first gate, the early next year decision. Are they contributing to funds, do?
Yes, they are, and also they are supplying through their, how can I put it, their advisers, London Continental Railways, human resources as well. And she has a consultancy expertise.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions on that section? Councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Chair. Just one question on risk and involving the correct stakeholders. Are we planning to involve the City of Winchester Trust in this first phase?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Todd, I'm incredibly impressed with how concise you seem to be this evening. Thank you for that. Okay, if there's no more questions on that section, we shall come on to page 21 to 30, items 11 and 12. Do we have any questions on items 11 and 12? Councillor Crask?
Thank you, Chair. If I look at page, the red line around what would be the area for the master plan, phasing diagram. Doesn't include much of the public realm in terms of roads and the junctions. It doesn't, Carfax Junction, it doesn't Sussex Street, it doesn't include Junction of Andover Road and Worthy Lane. Doesn't include in the key junctions that if it's going to work, they're not going to touch those junctions, master plan. So that's my observation, which is the context of the question. What is the status of the master? Development and planning context. Is it tied in to the local plan, regulatory statutory document? Given the amount of public engagement we're doing, which is a lot, would it be much of a stretch and would it be worth thinking about extending it to include the areas of public realm? And looking at it as something like an SPD, a supplementary planning document to the local plan? The benefit of that might be that it would enable proposals, fund the public realm work, do that at the same time, development on the by going a little bit bigger, taking it as statutory document. Do a lot, a bit more perhaps?
Thank you. And yes, and the intention is to, with our planning colleagues, that a master plan will be a requirement as part of the new local plan policy so that any planning application that comes forward will have to be supported by a master plan. And that will then make sure that there is material consideration. That master plan would need prior agreement from the council. In that way, it wouldn't be necessary to undertake a full SPD. And planning colleagues assured that it would deliver a high quality place with that master plan in agreement. In terms of the boundary, the boundary and scope that we've got shown on page 22, we didn't include down to the junctions because that was county responsibility. But we will need to agree with our local planning colleagues, the plan for the master plan that they would require for the local plan going forward.
Just some extra comments. The, if you take Carfax, that is something, a junction where frankly, a master plan for this area will instantly be overwritten by the county in terms of the movement strategy. How Carfax works is something that ties into the complete operation of the city's one-way system, the north park and ride, the east, no, the west park and ride, the east park and ride, how everything in the entire city works. So it doesn't make sense for it to be included, I don't think, within this master plan. However, we do need to work closely with the city on the movement strategy. So I know, for example, they have quite a few thoughts on how they might want to, or there have been studies done and thinking done on options for changing how Andover Road works, how that junction works with Worthy Lane. And we would need to be mindful of that in terms of the overall plan. But I think the right place for that kind of discussion to go on is within the context of the movement strategy, rather than trying to, within a very small footprint, try and solve citywide movement questions, which we can't do. So we will definitely, obviously, be having conversations with the county in terms of what their wishes and interests are in terms of movement in the area and how we reflect their thinking on the movement strategy, plus priority measures. We obviously have to talk to them in terms of what a transport hub might look like. All of those kind of questions, we have to be talking to them about it. But it remains our view that a master plan is the right tool because the high-level transport planning questions are being handled elsewhere and correctly so.
If I could just add, I mean, the fact that, I mean, the master plan effectively denotes the sort of the buildings, if I could put it that way, the absolute key will be, comes back to the public realm. So it's not as if we'll be only looking at what's in the red line. It goes without saying to actually make station approach successful, trying to sort out all those issues like, well, particularly you just talked about, things like the Carfax Junction, that's actually going to be critical to the wider master plan. So in a sense, certainly take your comments about what's in and not in the red line. But just to give you that reassurance, that, you know, part of the whole process, if we get to it, and bearing in mind, we've been talking about sort of gateways beforehand, will absolutely be considering the public realm and junction improvements and what you need to make this a place, and one which in particular which pedestrians and cyclists, as well as, and public transport, as well as, you know, the private cars feel comfortable in using. And it's particularly around how we can improve the environment for pedestrians.
Councillor Lehman?
Just carrying on from that with the red line, we've got a section next to the records office that goes up towards the exit from the station. That's not included. Is there a reason for that? Or is it because Hampshire want to keep that as a car parking space?
My understanding, if my understanding of the map is that it's only the grade two listed records office which we've left out of scope with the way the red line goes around the back of it and then the whole of the public realm in front of the station and in front of the station is within scope. I think I've understood the map correctly. Obviously, although actually it is a really important building and I think there are opportunities, as a personal view, there are opportunities for anything that we might do in the future to relate better to the records office and to see if we can, yeah, but anyway, that's a different discussion. The land on Station Hill, next to the record office, is within scope of the master plan, I think.
That's correct, and indeed, we are in discussions with the county council around, you know, obviously the relationship of the potential master plan to the records office. And we will, you know, effectively want to make sure that whatever is proposed or comes forward, obviously respects the listing and the setting of the records office, but also brings it into the wider public realm and those public realm discussions. Effectively, the buildings which are within scope are predominantly buildings which are owned either by ourselves, sites or indeed Network Rail. But that, again, does not mean to say that we won't, you know, this is not, don't think of it as a rigid red line, think of it as the initial sort of area, the scope for study, but within the context that to make any master plan work, you absolutely, of course, will need to think about the buildings which are adjacent to the red line area.
Thank you. Councillor Horle?
Thank you, Chair. Several questions on the set of pages you've just raised. The first one, are you able to share with us on page 23, you talk about other potential sites nearby? Do you have any in mind where we're potentially going to try and bring others into the sort of partnership? That would be helpful to understand. We talked about the capacity of the other projects, but one of the key questions is the vision for the other projects and whether everything's a mixed use site, whether it's accommodation, whether it's public realm, what is it that goes in each piece of the puzzle? So as you're doing CWR, which we still don't have defined in terms of its, we have some broad principles, but we don't have that fully defined. We don't have a high-level vision for all of these sites. We have other sites in the city that are vacant, like Debenhams, that people may have aspirations for, the university who have aspirations. So the question is, is there a mechanic for looking at all of the projects, if they're all in play, as councillor Todd indicated before, to work out that we get the right balance of facilities for the entire city? And that really talks to the principles that have been outlined, the development principles in 1110. The JLL report, which I think it says is already being commissioned in 1111, is that going to be available relatively soon? That would be good to understand. In 1113, I think it was mentioned earlier, good or bad, there is a lot of data from before. It talks here about sort of massing in heights and we know that there's a clear view about some of those things in the city. If we have that data, are we digging that out? I'm questioning whether that is, I'm sure some of that is still valid. The engagement strategy, and it comes up in several places, 1116. I'm questioning the fact that you're going to ask the district to pay for this if we go through the gates, but actually the district isn't being particularly asked about this. You're asking at the station, you're asking on the high street, but we're, and we're asking people very locally to the site. But with all due respect, this is a district project at the end of the day. And I do think it's incumbent upon us, if we're truly going to be open and transparent and broaden the consultation at the beginning, that there is an opportunity on a wider basis. And that covers things like the survey that might go out to certain people within radius of the site. And I think that wouldn't take too much effort in terms of the consultation to reach out on a broader basis. And I welcome the sort of options and the fact that we will, at the next gate, consider whether we do this alone or with partners, if that's the best route. I think that's quite helpful at this point to know that those options are still on the table. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Shall we come to you again, councillor Todd, first?
Yes, I think some of the questions, technical questions probably better answered by officers like, you know, other potential conversations that we've had because I've not been directly involved in those. As we've highlighted, we do absolutely, we are using data from before and it is informing all our work. And if there is particular data that people think we need to be pointed at, then we will, we will look at that. I'm open in terms of the consultation, we can be as wide as we can be. But let's not forget, yes, the district uses the station. It's the biggest, most busy station in the entire district. The district uses the car parks. We know that, well, certainly pre-COVID, whatever it was, I think 8,000 people commuted out and about 16,000 to 20,000 people commute in every day and most of those people are coming from the district. So it's important that we don't, you know, this is, when we talk about who we're consulting with, we are talking about residents, but we're also talking about visitors, people who work in the area. And that inevitably reaches, actually, in some cases, way beyond the district. We need to hear those voices as well. Also, people who study here, we know that, you know, for example, people coming to study at Simmons travel very long distances and we'll be making sure we hear from them. So, you know, we are, it's a station, we will be talking to people who are coming from longer distances. I'm also completely open to airing our online consultation more widely if we think that's what's needed. But I think our focus will be on people who are most actively using the area, who probably understand it best. In terms of how we manage the balance of uses within the city, I mean, call me naive, but I think that's the local plan, I mean, that's what it's for. It is to answer precisely that question. And I think you're also not being, not recognising the progress and the way that the different projects work and the fact that Mr East contact commented on earlier, they work at different speeds. The point, for example, with central Winchester The point, for example, with central Winchester is that it, it is more than the SPD, which already sets out parameters in terms of how that site will be used, but also reflects all the work that went into creating the development brief that was, has gone out as part of the next stage of the process. So, you know, inevitably, we need to be sensitive to context. You know, this is not Stalinist Russia or 1850s Paris. You know, we're not going to sit down and write a big plan and say, this is it. There's no flexibility, there's no ability to adjust. We have a local plan and we will, we will, we are working through the project process that we've outlined, where we start by listening, we're hearing people's views and then we will narrow in over time towards the effective solution. And we will always do that within the context of everything else that's going on in the city because, not least because none of you would let us do it any other way. There are some other questions that need answering, so I'll hand those over to officers.
Thank you and through you, Chair. In terms of what other sites are we, you know, looking at, talking to? At this stage, I mean, how can I fit? We are, and our intention is to have discussions with all the adjoining landowners. But I mean, I think you'd expect me to outline what discussions we've had to take because some of those are commercially confidential, as you'd expect. But I mean, it will be during the course of the next two months. Our intention is to meet with and discuss with all the adjoining landowners in terms of where their interests lie, what they're looking for as part of the engagement programme. And indeed, depending on where we get to, that will be something which will be reported when we get, you know, when we undertake and report back to yourselves as Tidic outlined, business plan. I think you mentioned the JLL report. We want to try and make as much as we can publicly available. Obviously, reports which have confidential or commercial information, you wouldn't expect us to publish. But certainly we will be looking, I think, at some stage to publish a summary of that report. And indeed, it will, along with other work and documents, help to form part of the process of producing the capacity study. And again, we will be reporting that back to yourselves later in the year. As I think councillor Todd has already stated, we have absolutely no intention of reinventing the wheel. We recognize that an awful lot of work has been done in previous years and where we can, want to sort of use that work. And indeed, you would have heard when we were discussing with our, you know, or hearing from our speakers, suggestion, for example, that we speak to Design Engine. We've already got a meeting set up to have that discussion. Again, this is not starting from year zero. This is actually building on all the work which has been undertaken in the past. And frankly, where there's work, you know, and studies which remain relevant, why would we want to, you know, raise money in that way? So absolutely, there has, we've already gathered, lots of, large part of getting the project set up was to actually gather the work we'd already done, understand what it said and sort of, and do that search on that. And as I said, you know, our intention is to continue to basically, where that study or work remains relevant, to build on that, as I said, rather than re.
Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. If I could just revisit the point that councillor Laming was making about the map. There is an area with, outside the red line, which actually in the previous iteration of the station approach development was quite an important area of public open space. And I think that's probably a mistake. So if that could just, it's just above and to the right of number one, which is, it's the Carfax site. There are two large yellow squares. One of them is inside the red line and the other should also be inside the red line. The one on the right, just by the big traffic light. It's very difficult, you can't, you can't, you can't zoom in very much on this map because it's. So I just wanted to point that out for clarity really, but you're assuring me that that is included in the, in the line. Because it has the potential. And I think it's very important to emphasize, as one of our speakers earlier on said, it's, it's an area that people walk through. And those through routes need to be as green and as pleasant as possible. And this area that's tensioned around the red line has actually quite a lot of trees in it already and so on. So at the moment, it's just used for county council car parking. But it has the potential for better use. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to miss some administrative error.
A great big thick red line, but we will make sure that the red line is moved down so that it makes it clear that that space there is, is for potential public use, rather than as seemed to be the case for many years for parking little minis there. So, yes.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. Firstly, one that's come up this evening, because as we've heard, the interactive map only works on the most recent iOS phones from Miss Dawson. And so how, an Android phone, so how can this be improved? Will there be maps, interactive maps available? Should people wish to come in and view them or some such? Or, or is there, or will you take that away and look at that?
I think that the technology that's being referred to is the commonplace system, which is being used by Hampshire County Council at the moment and which has received a great number of comments. But so it is working in that respect. I think we can only say that we will take it away and ask that there's proper usability testing of any solution that we use. Because we do need to make sure that it isn't just the latest iPhones that can use it. I mean, I know from other work that having things that work on mobile phones in particular and tablets is incredibly important nowadays for getting a response.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask, you said in item 1117 that you'll be doing social media advertising as one of the options. I just wondered, given the short notice that some of the residents had on the small area that you'd missed for this evening, did you use social media to promote this tonight or for them to come along? I know you said you'd invited some of the residents and some of them had incredibly short notice. I just wondered if that was put on social media to invite them and if so, do we need to improve that communication?
No, the social media campaign won't go live until we've got approval from Cabinet because it will be to a wider, wider audience. The invites were to the people only that were living in the area.
And also in item 1117, you talked about the community newsletters, the tabloid style newsletter that was going to go out. I wondered what the frequency of that was or if that will be a one off. And I know you said there'll be member briefings prior to engagement with wider community, but I wondered if there are regular newsletters, if members will also receive these or if we'll be kept updated via briefings. And, and it seems a shame to limit that to those just in the vicinity that's marked out when. So I wondered if that's going to be put on your social media campaign and published on the website and the like, that community newsletter?
Thank you, yes. The community newsletter will be going on the website, which again, will go live once, once we launch the engagement process. The frequency of the newsletter, albeit key points within the program, probably a quarterly basis, but depending on the, on the actual program. The intention is that there'll be a mail drop of the newsletter within a quarter mile radius of the site. But that it will go on the social media as well, so it can be picked up digitally.
And one final thing on that, you said that you'll be delivering paper copies of the surveys to those living in that particular vicinity alongside the newsletter. Will there be paper copies of the surveys available at strategic places across the district for those who want to interact via that paper copy method as opposed to online or some such?
Yes, we'll, we'll look at what places would be appropriate for that to, that to happen. But that is a good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. Again, on page 27, 11.17, engagement activity. I'd like to draw people's attention to the pop-up consultation. Great that it's going to be at the station. There is a wording here, the word is, but we also hope to speak to rail passengers. Anyone that travels on a train when they finish work or when they arrive at the train station, their on one mission is to literally run through those doors, jump on the train or come out of the train and move on. I don't think we're going to engage in conversations with people. Definitely passersby, I think that you need to have a newsletter to be able to hand to those people so they can either take it with them on the train or when they get off the train, they can take it to work. I'm a little concerned about the read radius of the site that you referred to, the letter going out. Only a quarter of a mile. I would be, I would suggest that letters should go out of a greater radius, if I may. Thank you very much.
Back to you.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. Yes, in terms of people rushing, rushing home or to work, definitely we'll have paper copies to hand out. We're also looking to have a QR code that people will be able to utilize so that they hopefully while they're on the, on the train, they can be completing the survey as they, as they go around. The quarter mile radius that we're suggesting takes into consideration 1,700 residents and businesses. But we could look at expanding that if, if members feel that we need to expand that area wider.
Councillor Crask?
Thank you. A question on page 25. In terms of the market research. Looking at JLL to combine their extensive knowledge of Winchester market with understanding and the council's aspirations for the site. Recognizing that it's not based purely on the most financial reward. By their priorities. There was a nice piece of work done with CWR to look at what the priorities are for CWR. I can imagine we're going in a situation where we need to balance the financial reward versus other benefits. Is that a catalogue? Is there some work to look at what we want to achieve from this site?
Thank you. Yes, we're starting with the development principles as a, as a means of conversation with the, the community and wider, wider stakeholders to shape what, what we want to get out of the site. But you're quite, you're quite right, that needs to be balanced in, in terms of, it must be deliverable and viable, any scheme that comes forward. But, but that's not the highest price that the council's interested in. We want, need to balance that with socio-economic outputs as well. But as we said, this is the, the sort of the start of a, start of a journey to understand what, what is possible and making sure that we get the, the best value out of that site, not just in terms of finance, but in terms of the benefits as well.
And dare I say that we, you know, it's about, this is all about place and public realm.
Do we have any other questions? councillor Westwood?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, page 28, the table with milestones, et cetera, there. Would it be helpful to have the output of deliverable associated with each of the milestones there? So when you read through that, it's not absolutely clear what will be delivered. There's a comment section, milestone stuff, but I think some of these would benefit if there was a specific deliverable.
Thank you councillor Westwood.
Yes, we can, we can certainly add that, we can certainly add the milestones to any, any future reports. Obviously, we haven't got time to do it on, on this one, but absolutely agree.
If I can just be really clear on that, so let me, let me pick an example. The first one, undertake an update transport studies. You've got a Greek survey work to be undertaking with HCT, obtain brief quotes, and so on and so on. Undertake surveys, but there's no output. What you will do is not what will be delivered. I'm asking for, can we define what will be delivered from each milestone during this period?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarity, I think there's kind of two potential ways of framing this. One is, there's an output which is a transport study. And then there's effectively the objective that you're trying to achieve with that transport study. And am I right in understanding that you'd like more clarity as to what exactly is the brief that we're asking them to fulfill, rather than the fact that there will be a transport study?
I'm asking for clarity on what I will be able to see and read and hold at the end of that milestone.
Well, the minimalist answer is a document that says transport study on the front. But we will try and, I think it'd probably be helpful if we give you a bit more clarity than that.
I think that would help us all. thank you councillor Todd.
Thank you for the suggestion councillor Westwood, I've noted that. Do we have any other questions on that section up until item 12? No. Any questions on appendix one then please, from page 31 to 36? councillor Becker?
Thank you, patiently waiting here. I should also note, I also represent one of the wards affected by this project because it's not just a St Paul's project, it's cattle market and Wuthley Lane car park fall within the St Bart's area. And so therefore also affects not just people using the station, but people living in the Hyde area and the Abbots Barton areas as well. I'm really happy that we're seeing a person-led engagement process here, rather than a building first and then asking people what they think about it. We're really starting with people, which is really positive change, I think. I'm also really pleased to see that at least we had so many local residents here engaging with the process at this early stage. And I wondered if, I've got a couple of questions. One is, can we seek that we use the local expertise that those residents have? Because they are the experts in their areas, how they use the site, how they know others use and move around the site, what they value on the site as part of the engagement process. I also have a question about how we engage with those who aren't, who are traditionally difficult to engage with. We do mention in the engagement plan that we hope to engage with them, but there's not a clear strategy for how we're planning, how we're planning on doing that, who we define as those, sorry, my microphone's cutting out. How we define those people who are traditionally difficult to, to engage with. It would be good to see a specific plan on that. And similar to councillor Westwood, I think what's missing from this plan is there's not really a sense about what the public can expect to be asked at each stage. What, you know, we've got, we've said that there are going to be gateways, but in the first engagement sessions, what can they, what questions can they expect to be asked? Can we be clear that we're asking specific questions at that stage? But if they have different questions, they, those questions will have an opportunity to be answered later on. So, so there is clarity for the public at the outset about the process, that they will be asked to participate. And so we're not, we're not left with disappointed people in the beginning stages that we're asking specific questions when they've got questions and comments that they want to make about something that we will be seeking answers to, just not yet.
Thank you. Very, very good questions there. In terms of how do we engage with the, the more difficult to, to reach? We'll, we'll do that through intermediaries, through organizations. So often rather than going to, if we don't know who the individuals are, going to an organization that deals with them. For instance, a disability access group, for instance, would be able to reach out to, to their members to help engage in the process. So that's one of the examples of how we'd engage with those people. In terms of clarity at the, at the outset, absolutely. When we launch the engagement. When we launch the engagement, we'll set out what that engagement will involve. In terms of the survey that will be going out, there'll be a specific number of questions, but there'll also be an opportunity for people to ask questions at that stage, and if it's not the appropriate time, we'll be able to tell them when the appropriate time will be. And in terms of using knowledge and expertise of local residents, absolutely, because they know better than anyone, so definitely that's what we want to see, residents engaged right throughout the process, and always listening and then responding as we go.
On that, can I just suggest perhaps we do some walkabouts, so physically walk around the area with some residents so they can show us, rather than just having paper responses?
Thank you. I've done that on some other regeneration projects that I've worked in, and I know that that's very, very effective, so yes, we'll arrange that.
And I'm certainly keen that local community are represented on the reference groups as well, so that we have a chance to hear from local stakeholders. The people who come and make deputations of councillor are at slightly higher risk of being tapped on the shoulder perhaps in those cases. One other thing that I hope we do get a chance, which we may enable us to adjust as we go along, is of course we are setting up a new Members Equality Diversity and Inclusion Forum, and although the sequencing isn't quite right, we will be very mindful of any recommendations and ideas that come out of that group in terms of making sure that we're doing a better job of all voices being heard.
It's actually something I was thinking when Councillor Becker suggested a walkabout, is that that won't necessarily be appropriate for some people, elderly residents, disabled residents and the like.
Well, it might be.
So adapt it for people's needs.
They can show us what the difficulties are moving around the site, are there dropped curbs that we need to start thinking about?
I think for elderly, that could be quite embarrassing on occasions, but I take your point, but I think in the interest of equality, we need to think about how to engage all residents in that, rather than just able-bodied to go on a walkabout. Councillor Rutter, you had a question?
Thank you, Chair. On engagement, if I could just put in a plea for, I don't want you to send the newsletter out as far as the Worthies, but I do want you to bear in mind that there is a community which isn't officially in the city, but is on the edge of the city, and will be significantly impacted by these changes, particularly if the local car park for Winchester, the cattle market disappears. So I want them to be reassured, for instance, the Northern Park and Ride will not be relevant for people for the Worthies, because they'd have to do a big detour to find it wherever it eventually turns up. So that they need a more reliable, frequent and affordable bus service. Spring, you know, has the potential to provide that, but it certainly doesn't at the moment. We need joined-up transport considerations for those slightly wider-out communities. The problem with the Worthy Lane junction is an issue, which has been skirted around, but nobody's yet, I'm hoping it's going to come out of the transport considerations. For instance, the Hyde Street changes, in the end, had to be abandoned because the considerations, the issues that people from the Worthies were going to face once those changes have been put in place and the Hyde Street had been closed, just hadn't really been taken properly into consideration. And we've been promised a much better cycle route, but we need to have that in place and functioning, and people being encouraged to use it much more regularly, as well as other alternative modes of transport into the city. And we need them to be confident about alternative routes and methods of travelling, so that they aren't then appalled by building on the cattle market, if indeed we end up building on the cattle market.
I can have a go at some of that. I mean, absolutely, fully, you know, the point I was talking about earlier, in terms of, the Worthies are people who use that area very intensively, so we, you know, if we are talking to Worthy Lane and cattle market, car park users, we will be talking to people from the Worthies. If we talk to people who are using the railway station, you know, sadly, Kingsworthy lost its railway station, and so you now rely on Winchester Railway Station, but it is your station.
It could be to us back.
Yeah, that's beyond the scope of this project. And the points you made about Worthy Lane Junction, some of us were banging our heads trying to get the county to do something about the Worthy Lane Junction at an earlier point, when it was causing major issues. There is, you know, an example of the work that this project will need to be mindful of and sensitive to, is the Corridor Study for Worthy Lane that is motionally funded and is part of the movement strategy, you know, the work that's been done to look at Andover Road, the work that's being looked at in terms of the Section 106 funding relating to Kings Barton, all of those things are part of, there's the context that we need to be mindful of as we work on this project. And your point about the fact that, you know, there isn't a park and ride for the Worthies is very well made, and so one of the things that I think is something that we as a council, with our county council colleagues, do have to be thinking about is, you know, what is our plan to enable active green travel for people living in the Worthies, so that they can use the city without feeling that they have to get in a private car as their only way of being able to get in for too much of a day and too often? So very supportive of all the points you make there. We can't solve them all with station approach, we need to be pushing, we need to be pushing to get those problems solved though through our work on the movement strategy, and we need to make sure that what we're doing, the station approach, is consistent with that work.
If I could just very quickly come back, thank you, Councillor Todd, there through you. If I could just say that it's important to consider the knock-on effects, and to reassure people that these issues are being considered, and that alternative, you know, transport modes and so on will be properly in place before, you know, what is there at the moment disappears. I think that's the main thing, is just to give people confidence that the council is aware of the wider considerations and the effects that this sort of development may have.
As we've talked about, the project so far, I think one of the things that is much more to the fore than it probably was before are the transport dependencies, are the fact that you can't just get rid of Worthy Lane and the cattle market without having a North Park and Ride, without having good bus services from the north, without having good cycle infrastructure, without there being alternatives, you know, because otherwise all that happens is you'll start sending more cars around the one-way system, and that isn't, you know, that's not consistent with the movement strategy either. So absolutely mindful of that. Thank you for your point.
Councillor Horrell.
Thank you, Chair. I think, actually in support of what Councillor Todd just said, the interdependencies with the movement strategy are fundamental. I think they've come out extensively this evening on different junctions, park and ride, car park usage, all of that, and I think it's a fundamental piece of information that will help us make the right decisions on this project and indeed others. I'm going to make one last plea on Appendix 1, and Councillor Todd has said very clearly, he's keen to get everyone's input. At this point, this is the time to open the door, let people, individuals craft thoughts for this, and this is a very significant district project. And if I were a councillor down in Wickham or Bishopswaltham, I'd be wondering how I can really get involved in this and my residents. And so my request really is, in the context of Appendix 1, what else can you do, and it's very clearly set out, the various activities that you'd like to undertake, what else can you undertake to ensure that people don't feel this is being foisted on them and they're being asked to pay for it, but they've had the chance, should they wish to, because they're a commuter through the station, or they just want to be able to walk into Winchester from that place through a very attractive public realm, or potentially live there, depending on what is designated for that space, but they've had their chance at this early stage to make their views known. And I don't feel at this stage that would be a difficult extension of the work already promised, so that as you go forward, people won't then say, but this isn't really what we wanted or supported. So I make that plea, I don't expect you to answer that now, but I make that plea to you, to see if you can do anything to enhance that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Horrell. I've put that as a note on our recommendations and actions. Councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so again, on the consultation, so we're working with a partner here, Network Rail, so my question to the officers and Councillor Todd is that presumably Network Rail have their own needs for consultation and input into this. Are they contained and reflected in this approach, or have they got their own consultation process?
So just to say on that, it is effectively a joint consultation, and indeed we have engaged Network Rail throughout all our discussions with our consultants on this, and so the approach which is set out for you tonight is one which has been agreed with Network Rail, and indeed they're participating on, and participating with, and particularly in terms of helping to promote, for example, the consultation on the station as well.
And paradoxically, of course, that means that almost automatically we have an interest in the wider area, because Network Rail, you know, Network Rail doesn't care whether we're consulting somebody from Sutton Scotney or Barton Stacey, I mean, we might do, because one's inside the district and the other isn't, but actually in terms of understanding what's going to be right for the development, it will be important that we are open and accessible to all parts of the district, but also that we recognise that there are people outside the district who use the station as well, and that we make sure that where appropriate, we're hearing their voices. I mean, I think it is important, obviously, that everything we do is accessible to people anywhere in the district. I suspect, you know, if we were to go into the Meel Valley and start asking people what they wanted us to do with station approach, they'd be more into, well, can you get a station at Welborn, rather than, you know, can you, than what we might be doing at station approach in Winchester. So I think absolutely right, we need to be mindful of the value and the accessibility to people across the district, but it's very much the view of this administration, that we need to be a district-wide administration, and I'd hope that people were so interested in all the consultations and projects that we might be doing in their own neighbourhood, that they didn't feel a burning need to be doing anything with station approach, although we would welcome their comments if they did.
Thank you, Councillor Todd. I'm fairly sure you won't get too many responses from Demade. Do we have any other questions on Appendix 1? No, Appendix 2, do we have any questions on Appendix 2 with the lovely timeline? I've already noted down that we will add on the phasing to that, and a picture of a gate. Any questions on Appendix 2? No. Do we have any debate on any of that that was just come before us, the report or the appendices? No. Oh, Councillor.
Chair, we've given this a thorough going over for the last hour and three quarters, and thank you to the officers and Councillor Todd for answering the questions. I think it is helpful to have this level of discussion early on in the project, so I welcome this and indeed other meetings that clearly will need to be scheduled. I don't see it on our work plan, Chair, for the next one, although you forewarned us of that, that we should plan that in, just as we should for CWR, which isn't on our work plan either, to ensure that we are able to give ourselves a little more leeway. I think one of the residents mentioned everything was quite backed up in terms of the notification of this meeting and then the cabinet decision. I think we have made the point before in scrutiny that if we could have a little more leeway to review things and then give feedback, that would be helpful to everyone, because this has to be written up and with Cabinet for next week, if it's going to be of any added value, or obviously, Councillor Todd is here and has heard firsthand. I think I can see the attractiveness of this project because of Network Rail coming to the party for the broader context of this area, but also perhaps just to comment, just calling it a transport hub is perhaps diminishing the value of this as an area, and what it offers, and all of the opportunities that we might have for visitors and local residents, wherever they are in the district. And I welcome the chance to go beyond the summer holidays for the consultation, I think that's often, we're often time constrained on that, and so therefore going through in September is exceedingly helpful. But I welcome the chance to contribute this evening, and I hope that we can continue to do this as we build the project and understand whether it is viable and worthwhile for the district. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Horrell. If there's no more to debate, I shall sum up. So the points I've taken down for our recommendations are add phasing to Appendix 2 and a gate in brackets at the end, take away to look at interactive maps to ensure it's usable on older phones, look at strategic areas to distribute paper copies of the survey so that across the district people have easier access to that, ensure distribution of the newsletter online and via social media etcetera. There's a question of should we extend the radius from quarter of a mile, just to really think about that and discuss that with members and between each other, whether you think that that is something that should be done. Add the output of deliverables associated with the milestones in the milestone table, clarity for residents around why we're asking what at each stage, so they know what the output is feeding into. Walkabouts offering for residents to seek input into consultations, consider virtual walkabouts for those with additional needs if need be or if it's warranted, and look at what else can be done to engage the district, if anything. Are there any points that people feel I've missed? Councillor Westwood?
Thank you. I may have not been listening properly, so I apologise, but we did talk about looking at the red line and making sure that that is correct, which is one of the recommendation points that certainly needs to be.
Thank you, Councillor Westwood. So with all of those points as recommendations, do we agree we've given a thorough airing and we're happy with those points to go forward to Cabinet? Okay, thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute comfort break in a minute, so we can all come back at half past. If everybody's happy to, so the tax team don't have to wait around any longer, I'd like to switch around the housing revenue out term report and the general fund out term report, so that tax can come up next. I'm aware they've sat patiently for an hour and three quarters, and we do very much appreciate it. So if we can all be back ready to go at half past, and we shall go straight in to itemate the housing revenue accounts. Thank you. Thank you.
Test, test, test. Sorry Chair, Dick, can I just check you can see and hear is okay?
Yes, I can see you and I can hear you.
Perfect, thank you.
Welcome back everybody. Mr Chief, is there a specific time you'd like to bring up your points or would you like to speak now? Okay, over to you then, Mr Chief, please.
It's just that the outturn report went before the TACT committee and TACT support group. And to be honest, we had a job trying to explain it. And in the end, through councillor Ferguson and the Chair of TACT, it was agreed that we could alter our TACT date from the 21st of July to the 28th, at which time Richard Botham was able to come and fully explain the paper to us, which is what has happened in the past. And we're very happy that that arrangement has been made. Thank you very much for asking me to speak, thank you.
Thank you for waiting so patiently. And I hope that Mr Botham will be able to fully explain that to you. Wonderful, thank you. So, this is the Housing Revenue Account Outturn Report 2122, REF SC 074, CAB 3354, on page 75 of the agenda packs. We've swapped around item eight with item seven for the benefit of TACT in the room. So the recommendation to this committee is that it's recommended that the committee scrutinise and comment on the proposals in the attached Cabinet report, reference CAB 3354, to be considered Cabinet as its meeting on the 19th of July. Councillor Ferguson, will you be introducing the people this evening?
Thank you, thank you Chair. I am going to be brief, which is always helpful, I know. So this is the final outturn position for 2122 in relation to the services funded through the housing revenue account. With regard to the revenue, we've obviously finished the year with a surplus on the HRA of 1.6 million, which was 230,000 more than forecast. In the report, there are a number of variances that contributed to that and I'm sure people will have questions on those. But it's recommended that we carry forward that additional money to support the set-up cost of the proposed housing company, which is still ongoing. We're also recommending, we feel it's really important that in the current climate, the tenancy support programme that we set up two years ago be extended into a third year to ensure that support is available to those tenants who may be struggling to sustain their tenancies at a time of increased costs. With regard to the housing capital programme, a number of variances are set out in the report. The biggest of these relating to the unavoidable delay in starting the Winall New Homes scheme. But development there is now well underway and we are due to finish that November 2023. I'm sure we'll be happy to answer any questions and Mrs Knight and Mr Botham will be helping, thank you.
Councillor Ferguson, we also have Dick Johnson online who can also assist this evening.
Perfect, sorry Dick, forgot you.
So coming on to the main report, does anybody have any questions on the main report, starting at page 75 of our agenda pack and going up to page 91 of our agenda pack? Councillor Horrell?
Chair, thank you. I suppose there are a number of questions and that is, I think, as a as a part of the council's business, we're across parties very supportive of the initiatives that the housing team are driving forward on. What becomes quite apparent though, when you look at the outturn report in various guises, is that we've just underspent across many, many areas. So we have the intent, we're supportive of it, but we haven't managed to get the money away. And so there is a list and I'm sure most of them are absolutely reasonable elements, you know, the fire safety, we can't get the materials to complete that, we're almost half a million behind. We didn't get all our retrofitting done because we found that was harder. Labour was less available, materials harder to source. So we're 1.8 million behind. We haven't been able to get estate improvements done because we couldn't get an officer recruited. So things that we're all completely committed to and want to do, we've sort of been on the back foot. So it reads as if there are a lot of reasons, and I'm not saying that they don't sound reasonable, but is there anything that we should be doing to sort of kickstart things? I appreciate recruitment is hard at the moment, we've talked a bit about that in areas like new homes. But it feels like we've lost some momentum in the last year, which is why we've got so many elements where we're having to roll forward or scheduling is impacting, but it doesn't make pretty reading some of this in the sense of the overall deliverable. Sorry.
If I may, Chair, I'll start and then I'm sure Mr Botham may want to come in. As I said in my introduction, one of the bigger variances was to do with the new home scheme at Winall. And that project was delayed because there was a need for some re costing with increased prices. There was also a delay because the way leaves that we needed from Southern Electric weren't forthcoming. And these are things we have to have before we can start on site. But what is clear is our absolute commitment to the new homes programme and a desire to fulfil that ambitious target of 1,000 new homes over 10 years. The report does talk about other issues with that programme particularly, but each of those schemes are being pressed forward as quickly as they can. We talked in our answer to the question you asked at full council about new homes, about the micronutrients, we had nitrates, now we have phosphates and we need to find a solution to that because that prevents new homes being built in the catchment area of the River Itchen. And in terms of the retrofit programme, we have now got a very good, very well qualified retrofit manager in Prashantabur Bridge. We're delighted she's come to us and she is really driving that programme forward. And we will be hoping to apply, in fact, we will be applying for that wave two funding from central government, which is looking at supporting retrofit in social housing. So that programme is now fully sort of going much better and I'm confident we'll make real progress there. Again, you mentioned the delay, the delay was to do with Osbornes, who are going to be our retrofit partner, and there was a need to adjust that contract. That also has now been done as well. There is also some accounting changes which may look like we've underspent, but there's been some movement in the accounts and perhaps Mr Botham can talk more about that. And the other issue, perhaps on some of the maintenance work that we want to do, we did talk about the inability to get the supplies for the far doors. But there was also a bit of a backlog coming out of Covid. And so again, there was a need to sort of catch up, but now we can forge forward. We have Chris Millet, a new officer, who's our estates improvement manager. And again, that programme will now move forward much more quickly. There have been staff shortages, recruiting staff, retaining staff is difficult. When you're in a situation when there aren't enough staff to go around and we're in competition with other private entities who might seek to poach our staff, then that is a difficulty. But we have someone new coming home board in the new homes programme. We have our retrofit manager now and I know there are many other local authorities who would like to have one and they can't find anybody, so we need to keep hold of her. We have our estates manager now, no, our estates improvement manager now. And we are recruiting where we need to. Is there anything you wanted to add, Richard?
Chair, if I could just clarify a couple of points around the accounting issues that councillor Ferguson just raised. So there's a couple of areas where reports and underspend in the capital programme that might be helpful if I just explain how that's occurred. And one is around our maintenance programme. So on our maintenance programme, we undertook a lot of work during the year which we originally had allocated to the capital budget. On reviewing the nature of the works, it became clear that they weren't properly capital works. So we had to recode those to revenue. So you may see in another section of the report, we overspent on revenue maintenance, we underspent on capital maintenance. So in a way, those two broadly equate for each other. Another area is on the new homes programme. We have an allocation which in the programme is referred to as the small sites allocation. And that's a really important allocation which allows the story act quickly to initiatives that come forward. And that initiative last year was the site at Whitley that members will be aware of, that we've moved forward on that site. We actually did the deal with the developer, we made an initial payment. So the capital programme shows an underspend of 4 million, but we actually spent 4 million on that site by the way of an advanced payment. Because it was an advanced payment, technically it falls into the 2223 accounts. So it doesn't show in this paper, but it has been spent and committed. So all of those things together with the Winall site as well also makes it look like the underspend was far greater than it truly has been. Another one that has actually come through today is we refer in the paper to the Wickham Community Land Trust. And that issue, they have now moved it to a stage where we've made that payment and that payment actually went to them today. So things are certainly moving on. Councillor Ferguson referred to the difficulties with recruitment and yes, we had a difficult year with recruitment across the council. But some of the more recent recruitment has been really, really positive. And we referred to one and some of you may, well, many of you may know an officer who previously worked on the new homes team, Simon Mags. We were really sorry to lose him a couple of years ago, well, he's the officer that came back to us now. So we see that's a really positive avoidance.
I'd just like to say I really am positive about Simon Mags coming back.
Chair, could I just ask, one of the other areas that supports the Winall development is the housing company, which you and I have been discussing for many a year. And obviously if that's up and running more positively now, where are we on actually? And we have money referred to in here that's been deferred. Where are we on getting that to a point where we can exercise that entity?
We are proposing to bring a report, well, I think at the moment, Mrs Knight, we're aiming for the September Business and Housing Policy Committee for just an update really of progress and we'll have those looking. We've still yet to finalise the business plan for that and how that works with the Winall scheme. But that's still the intention. The intention is that we will get formal approval for that later this year. We're working with the interim head of legal to sort out the final details around the governance and that's the sort of thing that we'll be bringing through the policy committee. But certainly looking for a report through to Cabinet later this year.
One other budget that didn't quite get spent and we know that there's a huge need is the adaptation of accommodation for those with disabilities. And I think we're about quarter of a million behind. And I know sometimes just processing those cases can be very complicated, getting the right medical support for that. And at one point, we were short of resources there as well to be able to do that. Can you reassure me that we're up to speed on that? So again, that important amount of money that allows people to stay in their own home and live with families is actively being pursued or do we still have some constraints there? Thank you.
No, you're right to say that we are certainly getting back on track with our disabled facility grants. We are seeing much more challenging applications. And you're right to say that that's because lots of people do prefer now to stay in their home. We do explore all housing options to make sure that we're future-proofing families when they want to stay in their homes. But it does mean that we're looking at extensions a bit more, which is complicated and takes longer. So again, we've had a couple of tough years, but we are in recovery and we are hoping. Yeah, and we're certainly being inundated with applications, both through the HRA and through the general fund adaptations grants.
Councillor Cook?
Thank you Chair. Councillor Ferguson referred to, when you first spoke about Osbornes. And was it the word adjusting the contract? Or could you explain that a bit more please? Thank you.
So the Osbornes contract that we did have is for our general repairs. And what we needed to do was if we wanted to instruct them to handle the retrofit programme, for which they have a separate team, then there was a decision day back in beginning of June where we made that decision to give them that retrofit part of the business. And under that contract, they will do the work with us. You know, it could last five years, but we will look at how it's going after a year and if needs be, we'll carry on. Does that make sense? So under their current contract, they didn't have that additional retrofit.
Can I ask another question with relevance to that? I understand though regarding their current contract and it didn't allow them to do the other work, but normally with the council, do you not then go out to tender and check that there aren't other companies that you would use? Or is it you put all your eggs in one basket, as they say?
Sorry, thank you councillor Cook. In the papers that we had for the decision day, it does make very clear that we considered other options. And it's true to say that there are some complexities in that because we're retrofitting our voids, there were concerns that if you had a separate company, that you could have one company go in, do the retrofit, they leave. The second company then goes in to make the property ready in all other means for the new tenant. And that could lead to substantial delays. TACT were consulted on the process and in this instance, it was felt that this was the best option. The other thing is also clear is that there is a shortage of people working in this industry. So we could have got someone who perhaps came in and said, yes, we can do all of this, put in a really good bid, but then we aren't sure that they actually would deliver. And generally, our tenants are very happy with Osbornes. So we felt we could trust them. Is there anything you want to add, Mr Botham?
Just that obviously ensuring that we were compliant with procurement rules was an important factor that was considered as part, that councillor Ferguson considered as part of that paper. We did issue a contract notice to the sector to say this was our intention and to invite any propositions, that there were any objections to that. And we received no objections and the legal advisers that that was reasonable to proceed on that basis.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions on the main report? No? Appendix, oh, councillor Crask?
Thank you Chair. It's always nice to underspend especially if we need money to support tenants with the tenancies. But is there any learnings perhaps from savings that have been made that we might apply in future years? This is one question. There's a big saving on interest. I might imagine we'd be able to be associated with that. Are there any, what are the key risks that the underspend has surfaced that we need to pay most attention to? I mean, that interest is on 12.2D.
I'm sure Dick Johnson will jump in if I say the wrong thing here. But broadly, that relates to the fact that obviously because we spend, we're showing a lower capital programme spend as part of this paper, the actual, the impact of that lower spend means that there's less impact on our revenue account. So that's a direct correlation. If we spend it quicker, which our plan wants to do, that would be the other way. So obviously we accounted to commit that 17 million pounds. We didn't, so the debt costs were lower, so that's effectively what it relates to.
Any other questions on the main report? No, appendix one then, that we have on page 92. Any questions on that? No, appendix two on page 93. Appendix three on page 95. Appendix four on page 96. Appendix five on page 97. Appendix six. And appendix seven. That was a wonderful run through. Do we have any debates on this paper, please? Councillor Horrell?
Chair, I want to say thank you to the officers for prevailing in difficult circumstances and thank you for the report and to offer our support for the broad principles that we're trying to work towards. But to really just ask you to yell and scream and request if you feel that you're getting behind on any of these things because of resources, be that recruitment or supplies or the labour market, so that we are clear because it feels as if we have aspirations we just haven't quite made in the last year. So we want to support you, Mrs Knight and the team really support you, but to make sure that we can achieve all those things that we want to deliver. And so we really want to be spent up next time, I think, is the message. But thank you for the clarity on all of this this evening.
Thank you. Any other debate? I just wanted to reiterate my thanks to the housing team who are always incredibly supportive and to the TACT team for their ongoing engagement, both with the housing team going forwards, but for always attending scrutiny meetings and engaging with us. We really appreciate it, thank you. So coming to the recommendation, do we feel we've scrutinised this report? We've had our chance to air it, we have no specific recommendations to Cabinet. Are we happy? Okay, thank you. TACT members in the room, you're welcome to say, but I will completely understand if you wish to leave. So coming on to item number seven, thank you for allowing me to switch those two around. And apologies councillor Power that it's meant that you've had to stay later. I just thought it was important for the TACT team. So we now come on to the general funds outturn paper 2122, REF SC 073, CAB 3352, page 41 of the agenda pack. So the recommendation is that the committee scrutinise and comment on the proposals within the attached Cabinet report, which to be considered by Cabinet's meeting on the 19th of July 2022. We have councillor Power, Mr Botham and Liz Keyes in the room. So thank you Liz for waiting around also. Who's going to introduce this? Is that you councillor Power? Over to you then.
Thank you Chairman. I agree about taking the housing paper earlier, very happy with that. I'm going to be likewise brief, as is my habit. We have a surplus. We intend to use that surplus to hopefully cover the inflationary pressures over this year and next year. The work to quantify those will not be complete until the autumn, at which point we will be looking at them more closely.
Sorry to interrupt you councillor Power, can you just move it slightly towards your, thank you.
Would you like me to start again Chairman?
If you wish to, but...
I am brief Chairman, as you know. So we do have a surplus from last year and we are setting up a reserve using most of that surplus to cover the possible inflationary pressures that we are looking forward to. That's 2 million pounds. We won't be quantifying those inflationary pressures, the work won't be complete until later in the year. But I think it's very necessary that we do. We are seen to be setting that aside. Risks. The only other note I'd like to make is that the town account has been a source of contention at this committee in the past. I have spoken to Mr Kennedy and we will be adding footnotes to the town accounts to show the amount actually spent on staff and on costs. It is comparable with what I would expect to see in a parish council. I also queried the fact that there was no receipts for sports pitches and cemetery and that is netted off in the accounts. Likewise, that will be a footnote in the accounts in future. Happy to take any questions or more likely refer them to Mrs...
Thank you councillor Power. I'm breaking this one down a little bit more than the HRA outturn paper. So coming to the report, does anybody have any questions pages 41 to 46 up to item 12.3? No? Pages 46 to 52 to the end of par 18? Councillor Horrell?
Sorry Chair, I may have just, I think you said at the original batch on up to 12.3. I did have a question on 12.3. We collected more in business rates, almost 600,000 than originally budgeted and obviously uncertain times, but was that just people did better, businesses did better than we anticipated? What drove that 600,000, please?
Chair, I can answer that one. It was to do with the forecasting that we've been doing during the year. There was a lot of uncertainty around the amount of grant that the council would receive to offset the reliefs that were given to businesses during Covid, particularly the grants for those that were outside of the support schemes. So because of that uncertainty, that's what's caused the variance against...
Thank you. Coming back, do we have any questions, pages 46, 52 up to the end?
Chair, sorry. Just a clarification on that point. That is, clearly our forecasting was cautious in light of that uncertainty. It isn't something we would anticipate seeing moving forward. It was a quirk of the year really, it's such, so much variation around the business rates and funding from government and grants coming in. So obviously we will look to make sure our forecasting is closer, as close as it can be to what it will be in future. But there isn't much learning from that because we don't anticipate that same circumstance next year.
Thank you Mr Ferguson. Councillor Horrell?
Chair, could someone just talk us through the variances at the Winchester Sport and Leisure Park? At the board meeting last week, we heard that it was doing very well. So we've got a favourable amount of 250 in, but then we've got an expenditure variance. So if someone are 500,000, so could I just have a little more clarity on what's happening at the sport and leisure park, please? at the sport and leisure park, please?
Yeah, so the budget for Winchester Sport and Leisure Park was based on the open book arrangement that we had because of all the difficulties with Covid. And again, because budgeting was so difficult, the end position as we went through the year was just different to the forecast that we used when we. Because nobody knew where revenue would go and how many people were spending the sport.
And do we feel we have a better handle on that now? Now we've sort of had a year, as it were. Do we feel that we've got a better view of what the future might look like there? Because obviously, the financing of the sport and leisure park is important, given the investment we've made. So just to understand that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we're working with them this year to make sure that we're back on track. So we're back in contract position this year, as expected. That's where we forecast.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Councillor Cook?
No, to, thank you, Chair. So to follow on then with the Winchester Sports and Leisure Park, this term has an open book approach. Now that they have traded for this period of time, that open book approach, am I right in saying it is no more? And they are, I know what happened in, what seemed to happen in the past with River Park. Are we able to see their books, basically? Do you know, they report to us. So what, as the operation, where do we stand and knowing what they take? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that question. So the open book arrangement allowed us to, allowed us to, yes, have access to their records. So on a monthly basis, they were sending us details of their income and expenditure. But that was only for this agreed period. So now going forward, slot back into the contractual arrangement that we had originally before Covid and the open book.
That answer your question, councillor Cook? You're not looking like it does.
No, maybe I'm not asking it in a correct manner. So they've been open a year, okay? So we're saying the open book now stops. And now we don't get to see what they take? Is that what you're saying? Give me, and I know you said there's the contract, but because I'm not one of those voting members on that panel, I don't get to see those things. So I just wondered, as a council, how transparent are we being, knowing that a great deal of money was spent to be able to build the complex? Thank you.
Yeah, so the open book approach was purely as a result of Covid, because if we'd stuck to the original contract, it would have been unfair expectations over usage of the leisure centre during Covid and lockdowns. That's why we had a separate open book approach, where we were able to scrutinise that. When we fall back into the contract, then it's a profit share arrangement.
Councillor Crask?
Probably ask the same question differently, perhaps. Has the open book arrangement given us any insights as to?